Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 15th edition of the Lexington City Council meeting. Glad that you're all here and like to call the meeting to order. And first item of business, if you could all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And the flag is on the stage.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next item is consideration of the agenda. Council members have any observations, changes? Yes, Ms. Strong.
Can I add a brief Ranna report when we do reports?
Did you say a brief?
Ranna.
Random?
Yes, that too.
Ranna, number eight. Thank you. And with that addition, if there's no objection, we'll accept the, approve the agenda as, with that correction or addition, rather. Have no proclamations for your delight this evening and no presentations. I'd like to move right into the public hearings and we will, the first public hearing is a petition for a change of New Marketplace to Evergreen Place. Thank you, ma'am, sir. And city manager, would you like to speak to this issue?
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, council members, we all know, of course, that we have put in place, city council has a process for renaming streets within the city. We did receive a petition from Mr. John Knox, who lives on New Marketplace, to petition and request the change of New Marketplace to Evergreen Place. The fee of $400, which is normally required, has not been paid, but it's my understanding from previous meetings that the council will waive this fee, in this case only, without changing policy. And the policy does require that city manager, myself, go through this process and know later than one month after the request, provide to city council. First time through with the other activities I've had going, I'm a little late on that. But I will say that the need to evaluate the different criteria that are required to be looked at before, bring it to council are pretty simple, so I don't believe that should be a problem in the future. Agencies who have been contacted include Vida, the post office, and our emergency communication center. None of those agencies see a problem with the name of the new street or the requested name of the new street. Looking at city expenses, there are some expenses with the renaming of the street itself. We have to process that. Typically staff, I understood or learned that, does that. In this case, of course, there's only one address on the street, so that amount of work is very limited. If we had a street with a few more addresses, it would be a few more hours of city staff time required. It could be substantial if there are a number of streets. It's normally about $50 to replace a street sign. There's only two in this case, so it's $100, if you will, sort of out-of-pocket expenses. And of course, both of those expenses are really quite minimal in this instance. I don't have any other information myself to share. We don't have any other information from Mr. Knox as to maybe the burdens or the difficulties he might face. And I believe that information would have to come from Mr. Knox in the future, of course. And primarily, I think it would be helpful, as council would like to review this policy in the first meeting of September, and perhaps by that time, Mr. Knox will have gone through the entire process, should you approve the request, and he may have some information that he can then share with us. So that is the extent of my report this evening. Obviously, this is a public hearing, so I would just indicate, have that public hearing, hear from the public, and take any action you prefer to take, although I believe in our previous discussions, your discussion, that maybe a second hearing may be appropriate to make sure the entire community understands what we are here doing and have opportunity to speak. But that is up to your discretion.
Council members have any questions? The city manager in that information hearing? Now, just to reiterate, an expectation is that we will hold the public hearing and not take action this evening. We're not in a particular hurry. Council can certainly take action if they'd like to, but the thought is it will give members of the public an opportunity to read it in the newspaper and be aware of the change and speak to it. And so there's no rush to get things changed or something of that nature, but just to have an orderly process. With that, in not hearing any questions, I would open the public hearing at 7:05 and ask if there's anyone in the public this evening who would like to speak to this issue. And this is the issue on the petition to change the name from New Marketplace to Evergreen Place. Ms. Johnson, if you'll please turn on the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Dawn Johnson, 411 North Randolph Street. Good evening, everyone. Sitting here thinking, Mr. Knox is the only resident on New Marketplace, and I was thinking of, you know, in situations as such, because we know that Evergreen Cemetery, of course, is a Black cemetery, New Market represents Confederate, why doesn't the city look at instances like that, that they could take upon themselves to change and not put their burden on the resident of the street that needs to be changed? That's just a thought. This is obvious, that it's something that the city should have done a while back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this topic? Hearing none at 7:06, I'd like to close the public hearing. And as articulated before, council will not be taking action this evening and look at considering this at our next meeting, which will be the first meeting in August. Next item is a public hearing in consideration of the sale of the Piovano parcel to Ra-Ra. And the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I can yield to you. We all know what this is about, so please continue.
Thank you, sir. I would like to, at the time of 7:07, like to open the public hearing and call on Valerie Malaterno to speak, please. And Val, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Valerie Malaterno. I live at 523 Jackson Avenue in Lexington, and I am the president of Ra-Ra. Good evening. Thank you for the time to speak, and thank you all for helping us get to this point in our negotiations to purchase the Piovano building. The purchase contract is in the meeting packet, so I'll let the details speak for themselves. I want the community to know that this contract has the unanimous support of the Ra-Ra Board of Directors. We're eager to complete this deal and return our total focus to our core mission. Ra-Ra is blessed to have tremendous community support in the form of neighbors helping neighbors. But to tell you, I am simply awed, excuse me, very emotional about this, by the fact that just a few individuals have put us in the financial position to be able to buy this building. These are people who deeply understand that there will always be people who need help meeting life's most basic needs. To those in the community who need our help, Ra-Ra plans to be here for as long as you need us. To enable that, I humbly ask council to approve the ordinance for sale. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Valerie, and thank you for your thoughtful words. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this topic? Seeing no one, at 7:09, would like to close the public hearing. And as we've been discussing and reviewing and working on this for several months, would ask for council's thoughtful consideration.
I move to approve ordinance 2021-03, an ordinance approving the sale of real estate owned by the city of Lexington, Virginia, to Rockbridge Area Relief Association.
A second.
Ms. Strong, if I could ask you to reconsider your motion to include the authorizing city manager to sign, which is in the packet. Do you see that?
Yeah, it's in the ordinance, but do I need to do that as well?
Please.
And I move to authorize the city manager and the clerk to execute a deed of conveyance.
That suffice. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll second that one.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Alligood. Any council discussion?
I just want to say I'm really glad that we got here. I really appreciate all the work that Ra-Ra went into to make this happen and the folks that supported Ra-Ra in all of this. And speaking for myself, I'm excited that Ra-Ra is going to be there. So, thank you.
Any one else? Hearing none, ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and Valerie and your team, your family, for the patience in getting us to this day, and look forward to continued partnership with the city and with Ra-Ra as we work towards executing this deal and in the future of Ra-Ra. So, thank you very much for being here. The next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes from the July 1 work session as well as regular meeting. And those were provided in your packet prior, unless there's any objection. Or, Ms. Strong?
I had one correction in the packet on page 27. When we were discussing the planning commission appointment, the first motion, at the end of it says carried unanimously, and if that could just be removed.
Very good. That is noted. And with that change...
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Next item is citizens' remarks and comments. We'd love to hear from the public and welcome anyone that would like to speak to council on items that aren't otherwise on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak here this evening? Ms. Dawn? Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. I would first thank Mr. Glassner and the city manager and Officer Fitzgerald for contacting me about some issues that I shared at the last time. And when I was speaking of our Black history that's being consumed by VMI, when I read today, well, yesterday's in the paper, there was a story with the WNL students who are, who have researched towards Black history and know that another building was sold in 2018 right under, you know, under our noses. It was a building that was, my notes. Anyway, it's in the paper. But I wanted to ask, what part does the city play in VMI furthering their endeavor to consume Diamond Hill? That's, I mean, I don't know what, how the city, what role the city plays in that.
Ms. Johnson, the public comments section of our meeting is for citizens to come and speak and perhaps to ask questions that we'll address later, but not
Okay.
... a forum to chat and discuss and
Okay.
... have back and forth or debate, so...
Okay. Well, that's a thought of mine, anyway.
Sure.
Also, to the city manager to share with me that when I spoke about the living down in, the old section being historical, again, I'm thinking, and I shared it with the city manager, when he may mention that the building is a government facility, and it's because the school board offices in there. And I was wondering, was there ever a conversation with our community as to have, to have used that building as a historical site for African-Americans, to use it for community-based activities? I just see that building not being used for a purpose that it could be used for, not just to house the school board that you can't, we have, don't have access to. Anyway, that's a thought.
Ms. Johnson, thank you for coming and bringing those questions. I would tell you, you raise excellent issues and between the city manager and Ms. Alexander as vice mayor and resident who's lived here a long time, she can address most of those questions and enlighten you on the history that the school board, I believe Ms. Alexander was on the school board when that building was renovated, and the use of it in the past and also going forward. And it is available for public use. It does house the offices, it also offices, or houses our, help me with the name, youth, Office on Youth.
Office on Youth.
Mm-hmm, which Tammy operates. So, the building is not open 24 hours a day for anyone to come and go, but it is available for the community. I think Community Watch still meets there? No?
They were meeting in the...
City Hall, okay. But the room's available for other meetings, but between the city manager and Marilyn and the rest of us, be glad to sit down and have a conversation about the uses and the ideas that you have to further the betterment of our community. So, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to next item, consent agenda. Have the request from Sam Bennett of the Rockbridge Community Festival, and would ask for council's consideration. I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion as second, and I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Encourage everybody to go have some fun in the sun. It's usually hot as the sun, but a good time and with not having the opportunity to get together last year, it's a wonderful experience and looking forward to it. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. I would move directly into reports and commissions. The Blue Ridge Resource Authority, our meeting for July is scheduled on July 26. Be riveting information at the county building and encourage you all to make plans to join us if your schedule allows, at 7 o'clock on Monday, the 26th. And otherwise, no report. And I call on Main Street Lexington. Ms. Strong?
The Main Street Board met on Tuesday, July 13, and we reviewed the FY '22 budget. Also, mark your calendars for Restaurant Week, which is July 26 through August 1. And as we heard in the consent agenda, the community festival is Saturday, August 28. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
What an exciting week. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong?
The Planning Commission met last Thursday, July 8, and the commission continued crafting an ordinance for small cell wireless facilities.
Terrific.
That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Strong on either of those? Hearing none, Regional Tourism Board.
The board met, or will meet, next week, Wednesday, July 21st. But this week, tourism receives and will begin distributing 10,000 copies of our annual Inspiration Guide, which features full-length stories and photo spreads to inspire prospective visitors. A couple events to mention, this weekend marks the grand opening of the newly expanded outdoor deck at Devil's Backbone Brewery, sorry. It's a perfect place to grab a beer and enjoy a sunset. The 67th Annual Fairfield Carnival opens tonight and will run through the weekend. And as part of the festivities, the Fairfield Fire Department Parade will kick off tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Finally, tonight's Southern Inn hosts the last of its guest bartender nights, and Rockbridge, YMCA's executive director Bobby Wagner will be serving up drinks until 9:00 PM. So, that's a reason to get out early.
Moving right along. Rockbridge Area Recreation Organization, no report. Thank you, David. Had a lengthy one until you heard about the guest bartender. Threshold, Ms. Alexander?
No report.
MSA, Mr. Alligood?
Even though the MSA board did not meet, I do have a report. The report that I gave at the last city council meeting about the MSA getting ready to take a look at the new facility study that's been prepared to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars, which will put in motion what we can expect as rate increases for water and sewer, has been delayed until at least the end of this month. At the MSA board meeting, that's scheduled for Tuesday, the 29th of this month, is my understanding that there will be consideration of the time when there will be established a work session to discuss in detail that facility study. But as of today, I've not seen it and it has not been presented to the board. And so that's hanging out there, and I just wanted to bring everybody up to date. It's really a big deal. I view it as a sleeper. There are things that are going to happen as a result of that that we need to be aware of, and I've often said at city council meetings and in other venues, hold on to your wallets. End of our report.
Thank you, Mr. Alligood. And next, the addition, Ranna. Ms. Strong?
Ranna met Monday, July 12, and the state is funding Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, or VATI grants, to expand broadband service across the state. And a letter of intent dealing, detailing interest in applying for a grant is due July 27. And Spencer Suter, the county administrator, is writing a letter of intent for a VATI grant for the region, which will include partnerships between Ranna, Bark, Dominion Power, Rockbridge County, the county EDA, and the cities of Lexington and Buena Vista if we choose to participate. The actual grant submission is due July 14. So, between now and then, you'll be hearing more about this to see how, if we want to participate and what that entails and what the project will look like. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
If you could just, the date again, you said between now and...
The actual grant is due September 14.
September 14.
So, it's a pretty tight timeline.
And is there any indication from the Ranna board? Do you have a sense that...
Well, the Ranna board fully supports moving forward. One of the things we will have to discuss as a city is to make your grant application more attractive, you need to put some matching funds in. So, we, Ranna, Valerie, Valerie Jacuto has outlined some areas in the city that are lacking the high-speed fiber broadband service. That would be good areas for us to expand laterals into those neighborhoods. So, she has some proposals for us, and we'll get more information about that and the cost. And then, if we decide to move forward with the county on this proposal, like I said, we'll have to see how we want to make our application look more attractive, which will mean some matching funds.
And if I'm not mistaken, these type of grants typically are more attractive if there's a regional effort
Exactly.
... versus
Exactly.
... Rockbridge County or Lexington going on their own.
Right.
We really, it would benefit all of us for Buena Vista, Lexington, and Rockbridge County to all be in sync.
That's right. And we all have a need for it, and exactly, it makes more sense to do it as a region rather than individually, yes.
Terrific. Any other questions for Ms. Strong?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Alligood, if you could pull your microphone down a little bit, just so it's clear, thank you.
How's that?
How's that?
Can you hear?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
The question is, has to do with that ARPA money that is being discussed. One of the facets that I listened to in a Virginia First Cities meeting that described the things you could use the ARPA money for included internet broadband connections to areas that don't have it, or to improve areas, to improve public meetings, being able to provide connections so that community meetings, so that government meetings would be facilitated, much like they were with the Zoom meeting. So, my question is, after getting around to it, is are we going to be talking about that ARPA money as part of this grant?
Exactly, right. We can use that ARPA money as our matching to make our application look more attractive, to get more funding to do even bigger project than if we just were to use ARPA money for broadband expansion. So, you're exactly right.
And one of the other items that was mentioned in that same meeting, Virginia First Cities, talked about money as part of this distribution, and the city now has received over $4 million for its first distribution this year. It'll be a matching amount again next year. There's a calculation that's associated with that money that determines how much unencumbered money is available. And even though internet connection money seems to be a good use for it that meets the standards, as I understand them currently, there might be some other things that the unencumbered money would have. I don't know if we've determined what that unencumbered amount is just yet, but I know it's been talked about a while ago.
We've not gone through that calculation yet? No, sir.
But since you brought it up, we are meeting on Monday at 9:00, right? 9:00 in the morning. Leslie, myself, Jim, and Jake, we're just going to kind of kickoff meeting of, to discuss the American Rescue Plan funds as we start to kind of wrap our minds around it and the process to bring back to council. But that's kind of our first kickoff get-together to discuss it. Thank you, Ms. Strong. Next item on the agenda is my report, and just a couple of items I wanted to speak to. One, I wanted to compliment David Ziegler and Leslie Strong for using your tablets. Last year, when we received these, it's when the state of emergency began, and we've been using our tablets for Zoom, which was very challenging to Zoom and use the paperless docs, if you will. I'm trying, and I encourage other members of council to get linked up and so we can make use of the systems that we've bought and should be utilizing. So, thank you for that indulgence, and I may be calling on you to make sure I'm utilizing this correctly. One of the things that we experienced when we went into the state of emergency and we were Zooming was receiving letters from the public, and we chose to read all those into the record as opposed to having people join us in Zoom. They were able to, but in some instances, it was difficult, and so we made do. We're now back in person, and we certainly encourage people and want folks to come and join us. But from a policy standpoint, I anticipate that if we have applicants for a public hearing, for instance, or something of that nature, we'll allow them to send in a writing if they're unable to be with us. But when it comes to communications to council, instead of reading them into the record, they will just be distributed to council for your consumption as opposed to having the obligation of reading them out loud to everyone. And they will also be included in our minutes for anyone to, for all to be aware and be familiar with. So, we want to be transparent, we want to be open, we want to be sunny, whatever term you want to use, and let everyone know that we're here, we're glad to engage in conversation in our efforts to do the very best policy for our city and its residents. So, going forward, again, we will be looking at utilizing that format and invite people to come and speak to us. We're not scary, are we, Ms. Johnson? And you can just come and speak, and we're glad to have you. So, please, please come join our meetings. The other is, at our last meeting, we were looking at appointment to the planning commission, and I believe we, I don't have my notes in front of me, the number of candidates that we had, I believe there were four, and we have two positions to be filled. And I don't have my note on the dates of those, but...
Do we want to break this into two motions or just do it together?
Preference of council.
Okay. We'll do it together.
Actually, let me retract that because one is a term that's already started but has not...
Actually, I looked it up. Both terms start August 1, 2021, and end July 31, 2024.
Perfect, thank you. And together, together is simpler.
Okay. I move to appoint John Driscoll and Nicholas Betts, both to four-year terms on the Lexington City Planning Commission, terms to begin August 1, 2021. City Planning Commission, terms to begin August 1st, 2021, and ending July 31st, 2024.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Let's see here. I have a note that it may be 2025. It's a four-year term. Is that?
On the website, it says.
I was trying to look it up real quick.
2024.
Let's see.
So that would be three years.
Oh, oh, then they are, they're different. One is.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. One's 2024 and one's 2025.
Stand by while we work through the details here.
John Driscoll ends 2021 until.
His getting ready to expire. It would be four-year.
The vacant position is open until July 31st, 2024.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we are reappointing John Driscoll to the.
2025.
To the.
Term.
Yes. For the four-year term ending August 1st, 2025. And we are appointing Nicholas Betts to the term ending.
2020.
2024.
Clear as mud?
And I'll second that one.
Excellent. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? And thank you, Janie. I was concerned about that, and for good reason. Hearing no discussion, as for a roll called vote, I would call on Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, or, just kidding. Thank you all for being willing to serve, and we're blessed that we had four very capable, qualified candidates, and disappointed we don't have four slots. But encourage you to attend all the trainings that are required to get to know Arnie and enjoy your time on the Planning Commission. And we'll look forward to seeing you in your formal capacity soon at the next Planning Commission meeting, and then certainly when, meet jointly with City Council in January, if not before. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda, trying to think if I had anything else under my report. I'm going to reserve the right to go back because I can in case I want to. But City Manager, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we have a rather short agenda, I did take some extra time to lengthen my report so we could be more productive in the time we have. Actually, I did lengthen it. I know in the past two meetings that Columbia Gas is still working in the community, and they are still primarily on Lexington and Washington Street. But also, you may have seen, they're on Nelson Street, Spotswood, and Estill Street. We are closely monitoring the work and getting good communication now from Columbia Gas and watching the street shutdowns and the signage, construction signage. It's a little confusing, but we're watching it closely. I would also note, in some cases, you might see some rather rough patches where Columbia Gas has been working, and those are temporary patches. Once they've finished all the work in town, they will come back in with the contractor and put the final patches in those areas to match the street that they're on. And when I say match the street that they're on, some of the streets are already pretty rough, so I don't think they can improve or damage them more than they already are, but they will, they will do their best. City revenues, we've ended the month of June and looked at our fiscal, look at our revenues, and they are very, very strong for the most part. Meals taxes went up 19.6% June over May, and they're at 138% of budget. And based on the research done by Jake Adams, these are the highest revenues on a monthly basis we've ever seen in meals tax. So people are definitely going out and eating and enjoying themselves in Lexington more than ever so. Lodging taxes, however, also increased, and that dramatic, that increase was more dramatic, up 49.8% since May. And that matches roughly what we saw in 2019. So I would say that in this particular case, our revenues for both meals and lodging have recovered in a very nice way from COVID, and they're very, very strong. Our general revenues, again, are very strong. We have a couple of areas where we're seeing some weakness yet, and those are in very minor areas of revenue. Rescue fees and utility taxes are still below our budget, but again, they're a very minor portion of our revenue figures overall. The only lagging area of note is water and sewer revenues, and those are still down, probably going to end the year below our budget expectations. We do expect them to come back, however, because primarily from what we can see, they're directly related to when VMI and WNA had no students in the community and perhaps even some of the staff had left. So with the two universities back fully in the fall, we expect revenues to recover in that area. Speaking of schools, there are a number of us in the community already planning back-to-school activities. One of those activities is a back-to-school and community picnic event in Richardson Park. The police department, in partnership with the Lexington Police Foundation, is looking at putting on a little event there from 11 until 2 on Saturday, August 14th. So put it on your calendar, and more details will be forthcoming. Something on a very sad note, I wanted to share with you. The City Finance Director, Jake Adams, has taken a position at Washington Elite and will be ending his employment with the city at the end of the month. Jake has done a great job for the city, and both his expertise and great personality will be missed. And while this is a wonderful opportunity for Jake, and we congratulate him and wish him well, it is hard to see him go. We have also, to try and pivot very quickly, put or brought on board Jennifer Bell as an interim finance director to keep operations flowing as smoothly as possible as Jake departs. She was actually in today, meeting with Jake, and she'll spend a couple of other days in the next weeks to come while Jake is still with us, getting some guidance and schooling from him so that hopefully we can keep moving very positively forward. Even though we did some, made some changes in our recycling program, I wanted to mention a couple of activities where we can continue to expand recycling. And one of those involves the Fridays Alive. A number of citizens, and myself included, noted that when you attend, the people serving you beverages take the beverage from the aluminum can and pour it into a glass, and the aluminum can goes right into a trash bag beside them. And primarily, all there is in that bag is aluminum cans. So we're going to provide an opportunity for everyone who's at those Fridays Night Alives to put your aluminum can in one container and your trash in another container. The J C's will then bring that, those bags down to a location where Public Works picks them up the next day. And so we ask all of you in the public, when you attend, separate your trash from your aluminum cans, and we'll have a little more recycling take place there. And I would like to credit Jim Manley from the Rockbridge Area Conservation Council also, his participation and cooperation in that event. The other thing I'd like to mention is that Boxer Wood is also putting a new grant, application in, to continue the composting program that they began last year. We're working with Boxer Wood on that. It's a competitive litter grant through the DEQ. And if it goes through, there will be more composting units made available to our citizens so that food waste can also be eliminated from the landfill and used as a soil amending resource. With regard to the fire department, they are also always heavily involved in training. And three of our staff in the department are now enrolled in classes to become certified fire inspectors. And training is also taking place for drivers and operators of aerial fire trucks. Both of these training opportunities are provided by the Virginia Department of Fire Programs. And as always true, the fire department training will lead to stronger performance and better levels of service from our fire department. This past Monday, the fire department was involved with all the other departments in the county with a battle of a large fire at a sawmill on Fredericksburg, on Fredericksburg Road. And our department was on the scene six hours fighting that fire. So it was a very extensive fire. In the police department, the department will be working with VMI Professor Karen Bliss and a VMI cadet to analyze shift schedules and partner assignments to evaluate how these factors could impact behaviors and activities on the job. Some research in other areas of the country has indicated that police services can improve through evaluation and resulting training of these scheduling and staffing assignments. So that's something that is being explored with the VMI cadet and with his professor to see if we can use these, use this data to make improvements to how we schedule and assign work in the department. Also note that Chief Green continues to expand in her role as our chief of police and recently attended the command board meeting of the Regional Drug Task Force. The Drug Task Force is made up of local law enforcement from Rockbridge and Bonnettock Counties, cities of Lexington and Buena Vista, and the state police. And of course, collaborative work among law enforcement in the region is necessary to combat drug activities that knows no boundaries. Of course, the department fully supported the July 3rd, July 4th, July Bike Parade. Chief Green was able to lead off the parade. And I should note, Main Street Lexington also needs a lot of credit for that because they are leadership and hard work makes this event possible every year. Regional jail updates, for several months, the jail has been seeking new legal counsel as the previous attorney decided to focus his time on other life activities. And after some months of searching, the jail commission recently approved the hiring of our own Jared Jenkins as new counsel for the regional jail. Jail numbers have declined recently. That is, population in recent months has declined as the state has now restarted accepting state responsible inmate transfers from local jails to state prisons. However, the number of local inmates still requires the jail to be double-bunked, and that is two bunks in every cell, 100% of the time. And we also pay to place local inmates in other jails at a premium cost. As a result of chronic overcrowding and the age of the jail, the jail commission is considering putting forth RFP to select a firm to conduct a jail study. While it's not known if a new jail, a jail expansion, or other improvements are currently necessary, the time is appropriate for such a study. Another positive note, the jail continues to permit and encourage appropriate inmates to take advantage of a number of work release opportunities. The jail recently started a program with VDOT that sees eight to 10 inmates working on road sides to pick up litter and keep road sides clean and safe. Most recently, this work has occurred at Cars Creek, Fancy Hill, and soon will occur in Fairfield. In the work release program, a separate program, three inmates are currently working and five others are pending work at private business as soon as they should be cleared to work. The trustee work program, which is where we get our assistance, is also restarted, and inmates who can work and be released are going out into the local communities, Rockbridge, Lexington, and Buena Vista. And all three of our localities use this program, and the number of inmates involved is on the rise. While these efforts are vital to support inmates who want to re-enter everyday life with skills and access to employment, the number of inmates involved is down from past years, and this is completely due to COVID. To keep inmates, where did I go? I missed that. In jail, infection-free, only those who are vaccinated can leave the jail and get out and work in the community. When combined with security protocols that limit release based upon flight risk and similar conditions, the number of inmates that qualify for work programs is substantially reduced, unfortunately. A little update on Diamond Hill. The financing for that project is still on track, and the interest rates are very favorable. I also did sign the contract today to begin mobilization with the contractor. And when materials are available, he can start that work. So we hope it'll start very quickly, but as with other projects and activities, material shortages continue to plague not only the city but society and business in general. Radar, our local transportation agency, reports increased ridership now that they can carry more passengers. Just a month ago, they could only transport three passengers at a time due to COVID restrictions. These requirements have been reduced, and they can now transport six passengers, which is still only 50% of available seats or capacity. They are also limited by staffing shortages and have not been able to run Saturdays due to too few staff. They are attempting to hire staff now so they can expand on Saturdays and restart that service. Some of you may note in the future that there appears to be work ongoing in Jordan's Point Park or on the Maury River, and it's not actually work in the park, but the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources is staging in Jordan's Point Park because they're doing river restoration, bank restoration on the far side of the river, but they cannot get to that site from that side of the river. So there'll be ferrying supplies and people and equipment across the river to do that work. Wanted to note a little bit of good news, again, on safety. Despite our tight streets and sometimes relatively heavy traffic, the streets in Lexington are normally very safe, as we know. However, Lexington was just honored this past Tuesday at the Highway Safety Summit for zero fatalities in both 2019 and 2020. And this recognition comes as a result of the safe driving vigilance of our residents and businesses, as well as the activities of our police, fire, and public works departments. And it's a further indicator of the quality of our community. Just a little report on our cemeteries. Annually, they do a closeout report, and we've done very well in FY21. The two cemeteries that we operate saw relatively normal activity levels. And during the year, 19 lots were sold in Oak Grove and two were sold in Evergreen. Eight lots were repurchased by the city and resulted in total sales of $56,900. Opening and closing activities of two cemeteries generated further revenues of $41,378. Another bit of news on recovery from COVID is, as you know, Fours is operating the outdoor pool as they did last year. And with the requirements for COVID restrictions really reduced or eliminated, the pool is doing very, very well. They weren't sure how that would go, if people would come back to the pools, but they have indicated that people are coming back to the pool and using it in very good numbers. Pool memberships are very strong, and of course, usership is strong. So they're very pleased and believe that, as we discussed earlier, when we approved our agreement, they thought there might be some need for some subsidy from the city. They believe that is probably a very reduced number if any subsidy may be required. So they're very positive at this point. That's all I have. If City Council has any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer those questions.
I have a question, not about your report, but about things that we talked about earlier. And that is, the, we discussed budget necessary to continue broadcasting council meetings on Zoom so that people could still participate on Zoom. And to do that would require the additional purchase of equipment. And we discussed, instead of doing that, maybe using the county administration building with that already set up, so there wouldn't be any expenditure other than the rent we would pay the county. And I was wondering how we stand on that.
I have spoken with the county administrator, Spencer Suter, and he is going to give me information as to what that would require, what that would look for, for us to go ahead and move forward in the facility, and I have not received it yet.
I have had several queries from Lexingtonians expressing a keen interest in City Council continuing to have this electronic access that began with Zoom meetings during the pandemic in there. Thanks.
Any other questions of the City Manager? I think I have two, Ms., maybe for Jared. The contract for the jail, is it with the Mann Legal Group or is it with you independently?
It's with the Mann Legal Group, with me named as the representative attorney on the account. Basically, the same setup we have with the city.
Terrific. Thank you. Now, do you have any other questions? Thank you, City Manager. And would move into City Attorney's Report.
Just a quick update on the opioid settlements. The Sackler bankruptcy, which you may have heard about or read about in the news recently, has finalized, that's been approved. City of Lexington authorized our outside council to vote to approve the settlement with those entities. So that's going to wind up, hopefully, by the end of the year before they determine what the actual amount of money that goes into sort of the bucket of funds ends up being. So that's hopefully getting finalized. A few of the other sources of funding are expected to finalize in the next few weeks. So things are starting to move somewhat rapidly in terms of coming up with an actual number of the amount of funds that are going to be available. Separately, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there's an issue of an agreement with the state, the Attorney General's Office, of how to divide those funds once those funds become available. And that memorandum of understanding is now finalized, and our outside council has suggested that municipalities across the state bring that to a vote before the end of August. So my suggestion will be to Jim to put this on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll provide all of the information, but essentially, this will be the city ratifying the agreement with the Attorney General, the state Attorney General, to create the opioid abatement authority and the division of funds from whatever amount of funds that end up as part of this overall settlements, how those get allocated amongst the municipalities within Virginia. So that will be in your packet for next week. And of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions as they come up, as you review those, certainly at the meeting. But expect to have that on the agenda, either at the first meeting in August or the second meeting in August. Happy to answer any questions.
Members of council, have any questions for the City Attorney? Thank you for navigating that mayhem and look forward to the final details. Next item on the agenda is new business, resolution to end the state of emergency. And I would call on City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, we all know we've been operating. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, we all know we've been operating under a state of emergency since the COVID outbreak last spring. The state, the governor's declaration recently expired, and so the state is no longer under a state of emergency. And I would recommend that our state of emergency also be lifted at this time. COVID does seem to be in a state of decline and not a state of emergency anymore. Hopefully, it will never return to that. City attorney has drafted a resolution for that purpose, and so I would ask that council approve this resolution and return us to normal in every way, sense, and form.
Thank you, city manager. Any questions for the city manager? Would note that we frequently, whenever we do enter into a state of emergency, it's a process for being able to apply for grants or refunds or replacement funds for different activities and expenses that we wouldn't normally have. So you had the resolution in your packet, and I would ask for council's consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution to return the city to a non-emergency status.
I second the motion.
You all have me a little bit worried that you want to stay in a state of emergency. Have a motion and second. Is any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll called vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Before we close, I want to go back to city manager's report. You mentioned the cemetery and the city buying back plots. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
And were those as a result of name change, or...
No, sir. We have every year a number of individuals whose families may have bought plots, you know, decades ago.
Right.
And the family members who were named as the heirs to those plots said, I don't live here anymore, and I don't have any need for those, and I'd like to sell them back, which we do at the purchased price that they bought them for. And then they can be resold, of course. We don't want to see those lots unused, and the individuals who have them just have no use for them anymore.
Very good. So the city expended the money, but it was, if it was bought in 1972 for $500, we refund the $500. So no harm, no foul. Thank you. Curious if there was any circumstance related there. Thank you all for being here. I should have asked at the beginning of the meeting, but if you do have any trouble hearing with our sound system, please let me know. I encourage all of council to make use of their microphones and speak directly into it so folks can hear. Yes, Leon?
I'm here representing the hearing impaired. I'd like to push on the very low call. I see that you have electronic applications. This way is not pointing to a public hearing. I haven't heard any.
Well, the speakers are in the ceiling and are somewhat cascading down on you. And hopefully, you can hear me well now, and it's important and incumbent upon all of council members to, and members of the public, to speak clearly and loudly into the microphone so all that can be heard.
I listen to pointing some of the microphones. The speakers towards the audience will sit behind it if you trust the public.
The speakers are all out there. If you sat behind us, you'd hear even less.
It's frustrating not to hear what's going on in a public venue.
Yes, sir.
It's true here. Something new would, you could connect those speakers to something pointed and cut some of the reverberation. That's my hearing impaired. The visual is something everyone on council is good-looking and love average, but audio sucks.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Hennig. We'll continue. There are always opportunities for improvement, and we love it when our friends and neighbors enlighten us on how we can do better. So thank you. Is there anything else to come before council this evening? If not, we'll, before adjourn, remind everyone that the Southern Inn and their guest bartender are still open for at least another hour. So if you have, if you're so inclined, stop by the Southern Inn. But thank you all for being here. We are adjourned.